All right, good evening. We will call to order the November ninth, 2021, Planning Commission meeting at 7:01. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to cook matters of business. We got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Empower your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Johnson, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Qualls.
Here.
Ms. Rainey.
Here.
Ms. Schulist.
Ms. Senyard.
Here.
Thank you. We will go to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist. Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Citizens comments?
There are none tonight.
Approval of minutes from the October 12th, 2021, regular meeting?
Yes, sir. Went ahead and discussed with Brandy prior to the meeting. There were a few different votes that weren't recorded correctly, but she's already got the details on those.
Any additional discussion? Anyone like to make a motion to approve as amended? Approve?
I'll second.
Johnson?
Mr. Anderson.
Ah.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Go to new business, item one, PC resolution, PC forty-eight dash twenty-one, final plat, Fernville Springs condos, phase two, thirty-six units on five point four six acres. Map forty-two, parcel sixty-three, property owners, SM Commercial LLC, applicant Trent Smith, Southern Consulting. In the resolution, I have two staff notes that we'll just read. Add an address block to final plat before recording and address cross-access concerns to adjoining properties and submit an updated final plat showing the removal of cross-access to adjoining properties or an executed agreement such legal documentation of cross-access approval. Welcome, Mr. Mangrove.
Good evening. Making myself a note of the addresses. I know I have those, so I just need to forward those. Print to add to the plat.
Any questions or discussion?
I think a good place to start would be, is there any documentation that the two plots of land are on the same page with this?
I have the minutes from the Fernville Springs HOA meeting in October of 2017 approving that connection.
You bring a copy for all of us?
I brought one. If somebody will show me the way to the copier, I'll make copy right now.
I don't think I know the way to the copier.
I think that our resolution as reads would allow if the board decides to approve this final plat and then let the applicant either provide documentation for adjoining property access or the removal of that access, the way I read it, that'd be correct.
That was the intent of that comment, was one or the other, and both of those, whichever way it is, would be done before the signing of the plat by Planning Commission as well as city staff.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion or questions, or anyone like to make a motion?
I have one, just discussion there. Previous conversation suggested that the existing homeowners' association was not in favor of this. So are we just out of the picture, or are we?
So the resolution as it reads right now would allow the cross-access if they submit an HOA document from that document, from the HOA allowing the access, or remove the access if they're unable to find resolution between those two parties, since it's a private road and not a public road.
HOA.
Sure, does it?
Yeah.
Yep.
The only, the only thing, the, and I don't have any issue with, with the, with the minutes from the meeting, the, the item specific to this reads, Rick Workman presented the request from, and there's no other pre or post-conversation with this, so. Rick Workman presented the request from the developer to extend our development into a phase three that would increase our neighborhood by another twenty-two to thirty units. The board recommended that we allow this, and it passed with eleven voting in favor and four no votes. So I don't know what that number of units is. I know this listed twenty-two to thirty, and then there was some question about concerns from the HOA members today stating they had some concerns. So I'm, in full disclosure, the city's not opposed to however this goes. I think we just need to get some clarification on where that is. I'd be glad, be glad, Mr. Butler, to provide this to you.
Didn't we clarify earlier that this is phase tech, there was three phases in the original, and phase four is this one? I mean, not technically, but that's what it should be.
So, so, so this, the existing development, the existing Fernville is its own Fernville, and it's my understanding that those phases are complete, that this is a neighboring property previously not associated with this, and they are terming it as phase four, but it was never approved as an official phase.
But you just read phase three, meaning that may not reference this area at all.
Well, it does, because the, the HOA didn't realize there was three phases to the current Fernville Springs. Everybody assumed it was two, because that's pretty much the way it was developed, but at the time, you got to go back to 2003. We went through a downturn in the market a time or two. I want to say there was even a moratorium, and a mix of that with some sewer issues, so that, that froze the development for an extended amount of time and ended up getting it broken down further than it had intended to be broken down from when it was originally approved and started in 2002. So we're going back almost twenty years. And to give you just a little history on that, so that's, that's 2017. We did not have the property in question under contract at the time. We had been in discussions on trying to acquire that property. Once we knew we could acquire it, I spoke with the, the HOA about making this a future phase. And with that vote, we put the property under contract a couple of days later, and then there end up some being some, some other discussions, longer discussions, and as y'all was talking about in your workshop, there was the issue with the existing road. We agreed to top the road for that connectivity, even though we thought we had the connectivity prior to that, but to, to feel like we were being a, a good neighbor and assisting them, as well as making our future phase more presentable. We just thought that would, that was a good compromise for us, fix their problem and, and made the entire development look better.
So, Mr. Butler, I will provide this to you, but again, and I'll just read this again so everyone can hear this, but again, this is their, their minutes proposed from October fourteenth, 2017. Paragraph specific to this says, Rick Workman presented the request from the developer to extend our development into a phase three that would increase our neighborhood by another twenty-two to thirty units. The board recommended that we allow this, and it passed eleven to four. It doesn't state what their phase, what a phase three would be, and certainly the number of units was listed at twenty-two to thirty. Outside of that, the city has no, no game in this, but I'll provide this to you, sir, but that's what that document says, and I've highlighted the.
Tim, what was the date you bought this property? Do you remember?
I think we contracted that property on October. I was just looking through emails just a few minutes ago, sitting here thinking about that. I think I put that under contract on the seventeenth of October.
And this is dated what?
The fourteenth, and we didn't close till sometime mid, late of 2018, because we was going through the, the city approvals, and we was contingent on these approvals, of course, before we purchased the property.
Yeah. Chairman, can we hear from the HOA?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Anderson, do you have?
So those, those.
State your name for me.
Jason Anderson. I live in seventy-one ten Fernville Springs Court.
Thank you, sir.
So I remember the HOA board, they're all right there now. Those meetings reflect this plat or this, this piece of property you're looking at now. The contingency that we had put on, put on that was topping our road. That's been completed. So the connectivity piece of this, that there's a note about, I believe, in the final approval, because we're aware, I think, we're going to get with Tim and decide, you know, connectivity between the two from an HOA perspective. But from a plat perspective, this was voted on back in 2017. It's just not counted fruition. So it's, it was, this was the, the same piece of property referenced in those meetings. Anything else for me?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. I guess the question is, is it our duty to mediate between these two private property connection owners, or where our resolution allows them to resolve, come back with a document or a removal, and it satisfies either way? Is that, you know?
I think our only, our only concern has been that we've had members of the HOA meet with the staff as recently as today, stating that the HOA was opposed to this connection. We've heard a member tonight say that the HOA is unopposed to the connection, pending some discussions of their joint HOA. The document that, that purports to be the approval purports that it includes development into a phase three for a number of twenty-two to thirty lots, and this, this document that we have before us, I believe, is sixty lots.
Thirty-six.
Or thirty-six, I'm sorry. So the only caution I would have would be ensuring that the city is comfortable with the approval of that connectivity. But that's my only concern, whether or not we do that and require some formal agreement or accept what's been presented tonight as, as their approval, just so that the existing HOA doesn't have a recourse against the city to come back and say, we have effectively imposed this connectivity. If the planning commission is comfortable with that, then.
That's what our resolution as reads right now would be, they, the applicant would have to provide an executed agreement or legal documentation of approval from that HOA or that private property street owner, or create a plat that shows the removal of that access point if unable to provide that.
Correct, sir.
And so if we pass that resolution, that would essentially allow those parties to, to form a resolution and proceed from there.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And provide us a document or remove it either way.
That's correct.
So it would be contingent.
Right.
I would make a motion, I don't know if it's a motion, but that we postpone until they, they make those documents presented and, and make their agreement with both parties complete. I don't think that, personally, I think it's an incomplete process, and it should wait until the final documents are there.
I guess I'm a little confused on why it's incomplete. We went off of that, and that's just like y'all having a meeting here, and y'all vote tonight. Does that mean it's not right tomorrow? They voted. We spent forty thousand dollars topping their road. We can cut the connection off if they want to pay me the forty grand.
I think.
I mean, that, that's where I'm at. We've been trying to get to this for quite some time, not knowing that we had to do a final plat, and I, I'll take responsibility for that, whether it's mine or not. But we're here, you know, we're, we're just trying to do what we started, get this thing finished before winter gets here, and let's get some, some more rooftops for Fairview.
I have one question, which has nothing to do with this, except what you just said. So wasn't Fernville Springs your development originally?
It was an, it was an LLC that's been gone since 2006.
Okay, so weren't you required to put that top layer of pavement in there anyway?
No, because I didn't own it. That was an LLC that is no longer in existence and hasn't been since 2006.
Mr. Mangrove, to be clear, you did not own that LLC?
Then I did, but it's defunct.
So your LLC at that time was the developer for that property?
Yes.
Okay, so who was supposed to be responsible for the top coat in the beginning?
The developer.
Which was your LLC?
And went bankrupt. That eliminates all of that, and that's far as I'm going to go with that.
And Mr. Potter would be the expert for me. I, I'm not familiar with that stuff at all, but.
But I don't think that's our discussion at hand. I think the connection is the discussion, and I don't know if it's, if it's our decision to be made whether the private property connects, if it was through public right-of-ways, we would vote, we'd connect, the plats would match. But I think that that, maybe their board needs to have another meeting and another vote or a visit and come to a resolution where it can provide our city direction to say, we're okay with this private connection onto our private property, or we need to have it removed. Was that suffice to say?
We have a motion on the floor.
Did we have a motion? I apologize. Did I have a second?
I had a motion to defer.
Motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I still have two more questions. Currently, Fernville Springs south, just south that line where it would connect, are there, are lots ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen completed right now? It looked like they were condo, were those completed?
Yes.
So you actually have condos and a little road that actually connects right there?
Yes, sir. The roads are fully connected.
So it's a road to nowhere at this point? It's just a road to a property line?
Well, it's a road to those roads. All what, the road you see up there are complete. They're in, curves are in, they're.
So everything's already connected?
Yes, sir.
It's not a matter of connecting them. They are.
They've been connected for almost a year.
So you would have to disconnect them if this doesn't.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. So that was question one. Question two has nothing to do with roads, has everything to do with open space. So for an R and R development, we're supposed to have improved open space, so around ten percent, and all I see is common space, but I don't see anything that explicitly shows where there might be playgrounds or areas for social connection for the community members.
I don't remember those conversations back when this come for preliminary approval, site approval, but all outside of the doors of each one of those units is common ground, which could be theoretically green space or whatever you want to call it, but it's, when you buy a condo, you buy the building from the bricks in and the ground it sits on, and that is it. Even your parking area is pri, is common.
Yeah, understood. Just section four, one eleven of our subdivision regulations specifically states that we require ten percent, at least ten percent improved open space for things like neighborhood playgrounds, recreation areas, things like that. In 2018, one of the plans that we did approve, or at least the planning commission made a motion for approval at that point, had a gazebo, and that was the only thing that I saw in there, and that's even removed from these plans. So what do you currently have planned out for improved open space?
What you see there?
I don't see anything. All I see is the word common area or common space written around there, but what actually is it? Is it grass? Is there?
It's grass, yeah. Everything outside of what you see is either road or, or concrete for their parking area is all grass.
Okay, so that would be unimproved open space at that point. So there is no improved open space either, so that would be another thing that we do not have for this lot.
But I think, to be fair, this final plat is matching what was submitted and approved, so this isn't a revision. This is, this has been built per submitted and approved prior.
Well, at least the one that we had approved back in 2018 had a gazebo on the little corner space up here as you entered the development and then turned right onto that road. There was a proposed gazebo there, at least there was something, but there's nothing now.
We have a motion on the floor for deferment in a second.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, can we hear from the guy with the mask on back there?
Yes, sir. If you could state your name for me, sir. What's your name, sir?
Joe Scott.
Mr. Scott, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So I'm a new board member, and one of the things that I understand that may be an issue is that our bylaws state that fifty-one percent of the homeowners would have to approve this, and we have no documentation demonstrating that that has occurred. So I'm not sure what happened in 2017 at that meeting. I heard numbers of eleven and four. There, there's only five board members now. I don't know how many board members there were in 2017. That was before I had arrived on, I bought my unit last year. So, so there's that question, and we're seeking legal counsel to find out, you know, what the obligations of the board are and what the, what the lines are. So, so I'm not sure the board had the authority to make the connection. So that's a question that it remains to be answered, and it's also understanding, our understanding, that the homeowners' association owns that property. It has no relationship with a prior developer or any current developers, and, and the property owners have to approve any kind of connection to a, a new development, and that has not occurred. So we feel like that, you know, we're, we don't feel interested in assuming the responsibility of maintaining a road for a development that we have no revenue from and that we have no control over. And so we're going to have their traffic on our road. We own that road now, and we have to maintain it, and that, that traffic is going to endanger our children, our cars, our carports, whatever. So if anybody has a wreck on our road, which we own, we as, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our homeowners, and we would be liable for any damage that would occur from homeowners in the development other than ours. So our perspective is that we would prefer to stay separate and to not have a connection in any way with the new development, but if there is an obligation for us to do that, we will fulfill that obligation. But that obligation has to be demonstrated by a legally binding agreement between the fifty-one percent of the owners of the, the existing property and whoever it is that's going to, to be building this new development. And since that agreement was made in 2017, it's our understanding that the company that, that we, that apparently met with the board in 2017 no longer exists. It's now under new management, new owner, new name, and so I'm not sure who agreed to what with whom or where we are now. But it's, it's our understanding at this point that we're not obligated to do this connection, and we have to, we would have to pay for an attorney to determine that, and we would have to go to the trouble of, of getting fifty-one percent of the homeowners to sign the agreement so that it could be legally binding.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question if I can.
Sir.
It's more of a, I guess, just looking for clarification from either Mr. Collins or Mr. Potter. So what document would need, would be sufficient, I guess, as presented to us to meet the requirements of what's been added to the resolution here? As far as, like, I know that document was presented tonight from a legal standpoint. I mean, is that sufficient, or do we need more?
Haven't seen it.
Okay. I was just curious if there, I guess really what I was trying to do is give both parties an idea of what would need to be presented moving forward, so we just don't find ourselves in this revolving conversation.
Ms. McDonald, I think ideally some sort of recorded easement, access easement between the two sites were probably the most effective, although I don't think we could demand that thing. I think recorded easements where there's cross-access between the two developments would be the easiest or the, the most effective. That said, any, anything I think that could formally demonstrate that, again, we're, we're not opposed to the approval of the, of the plat as it exists, the footprint works for us. We're just trying to keep the city out of the crossfire for approving a connection that clearly a, a portion of some group has stated they're opposed to, and it's a private property connection, so that's where we arrived at, at the proposed language.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the units, the four units you just asked me was complete. We owned that property with nothing on it prior to this connection. So we gave ourself connection, I guess, with their approval. We, we have done our part of that agreement, and I, I think we went above and beyond to try to, to get this done. And we, like I said, we spent approximately forty thousand dollars topping their road, even after that eleven to four, eleven to five vote.
I'd like to just reinstate that this is a, an issue that I just don't feel that the board is ready to look at, and I think that's why it needs to be deferred. I, I could make a bunch of comments on that, and I don't feel like it's our place. I feel like it needs to be resolved between the board and the developer, and my personal opinion is I think it needs to be deferred.
We have a motion in a second. My only discussion in, in regard to deferment would be, this plat was submitted, this plat was approved, the HOA came at the time and, and discussed, they had a meeting and, and that they approved the connection. That other piece, Mr. Jenkins pulled up a minute ago, with those four units, does show a stub road, so I don't think it would be fair to defer it when everything has kind of gone per the direction that everything was approved. But if we pass with this resolution, it allows those two private parties to resolve and takes us out of the discussion of enforcing or not enforcing. It allows those two parties to come to a resolution and bring us the document or to remove the connection piece, in my opinion.
So you're saying we should just vote it up or down?
We have a motion right now for deferment, so if there's no more discussion on that, I'll call that vote.
Okay.
Any more discussion on deferment? Ms. Johnson, if you'll call that vote, please.
Mr. Anderson. Ms.
To defer.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Nay.
Mr. McDonald.
Nay.
Ms. Qualls.
Nay.
Ms. Schulist.
Nay.
Ms. Senyard.
Nay.
Mr. Butler.
Nay.
Motion fails.
So that was a motion for deferment. We're still on an active item, bit, new business, item one, so we need a motion for approval or a motion of denial.
I make a motion to deny.
Motion denied. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Calley has the second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, if you please, call, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
To be clear, this is a motion for denial, correct?
That is correct.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
I need to be clarified, if this, if this goes through as denial.
That, that serves as a motion to deny the application for this plat. The motion is to deny the plat you have presented before you.
Nay.
Ms. Qualls.
Nay.
Ms. Schulist.
Nay.
Ms. Senyard.
Nay.
And Mr. Butler.
Nay. Can confirm the vote?
Motion fails.
Fails. So motion deny has failed.
Motion to approve. Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-one.
Motion to approve the resolution forty-eight twenty-one. We conclude the notes for cross-access concerns, the final plat before, so it's made an updated final plat showing the removal of cross-access to adjoining properties or an executed agreement slash legal documentation of cross-accesses approval.
I'll second.
First, second. Any additional discussion? Johnson?
So, Mr. Chairman, that.
Yes, sir.
One of the contingencies you mentioned was that there must be legal documentation.
For approval for the access between, from the other private property owner or a new plat that shows the removal of that stub access street, is the way it reads now. The resolution?
As part of, as part of the requirement whenever it's produced.
And I think it's, would be, in my opinion, it would be fully acceptable for the staff to be able to accomplish that before signing or agreeing to anything, but without us having to revisit the discussion.
Does that mean? Do you will review it?
Yes, and I'll so advise staff.
As a note, that would be recorded with the plat, since that is part of this resolution.
Okay, so I understand. So there will be a legal document?
Or the removal of the access point. One of those two solutions will come from this.
And Mr. Potter's going to review it.
Yes.
Yep.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. K. Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Nay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Magron.
Bonds, no bonds tonight. Reports for discussion information, city planning staff. Mr. Sullivan.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out for the work session before. I think we got a lot out of that. I appreciate the communication. I look forward to those being with all of the meetings next year. We had, do have that scheduled for 5:44, 5:45 before every meeting next year, so that'll just be our new standard for that work session with the 7 o'clock meeting. That calendar is online under the planning section of the website, so if there's any questions for that, or has any of that calendar goes, that is a live calendar at this point, so you can feel free to go through and look at that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Mike's comments about tonight's meeting, talking about slope protection entries. I think that's a very good way forward as we're moving into MS4 and trying to get prepared for that. I think we had a really good discussion. I think that'll help us go back and start solidifying some of our standards and strengthening those to make good headway. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Can I back up one and have one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Tomorrow is the training. I know Commissioner Butler sent that out for MTEST. I don't know if anybody was signed up for that or not. If anybody did sign up for that, that does count for training as well as planning commission training for the budget. Please have those receipts sent over to me, and we'll take care of getting that taken care of, but hope to see at least some of you all there for that. And I believe there's another one or two of those sessions, this will be the only one in Nashville, but if anybody can be a part of those, looking over the agenda, it does look like it's going to be a pretty good session. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will, I think most everybody you here met, our assistant city engineer, Ms. Tati, so if you have any comments for us tonight or introduction, we're glad to have you, excited to have you.
Good to meet you.
Welcome, welcome.
We're excited to have you.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Collins, city manager?
Nothing for you tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Potter, city attorney.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to communication from the planning commission members. Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Jenkins.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Senyard.
Nothing.
Ms. Shulist.
Nothing, for me.
Calley.
Nothing tonight.
Qualls.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and welcome, Ms. Tati. Happy to have you.
Mayor Rainey.
Nothing tonight, except welcome. Good to have you here.
And Mr. Anderson.
Just remind everybody that the Thursday is the 11th, and that's Veterans Day. It's very important, and the city of Fairview has a reverse parade at Bowie Park. I think it starts around noon. There'll be some veterans there. It's an unusual parade, but I hope that you have the time to drive through.
Veterans parade starts at 10 o'clock Saturday.
10 o'clock, I'm sorry.
10 o'clock on Saturday in the park. In the park, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.[1772.33]